Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul Cunningham is the pastor at Westmore Community Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilman David Greenwald to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Thank you for joining me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, this morning we thank you. And we lift up the leaders of our nation, our great state, our great city, and these leaders here at City Council and our mayor. We pray that you'd bless them, that you would lead them, that you would guide them, that you would give them wisdom in the decisions that they make. We thank you. Amen.
Please face the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each month, the downtown Oklahoma City Rotary Club allows us to honor one teacher in the city of Oklahoma City as our Teacher of the Month. And as you can imagine, in a city with 24 school districts and over 100,000 students, being the Teacher of the Month is quite an honor. And this morning, I want to recognize Diana Dawson and have her come forward. And bring your entire group. Robin, come on up and bring the family members on up. Diana is a teacher at Millard-Filmore Elementary School. She teaches English to students who don't have English as their first language. We have a resolution. Let's the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Diana Dawson has been named Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for November 2012. Whereas Diana Dawson teaches English language learners at Filmore Elementary and has served Oklahoma City Public Schools students for six years. Whereas Diana Dawson was honored as the Rockwood Elementary Building Teacher of the Year and finished second runner-up for the 2012-2013 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year competition. Whereas Diana Dawson also serves as one of the two lead technology facilitators at Filmore to help teachers incorporate technology into their classrooms. Diana Dawson is an advocate for students and other English language learners and builds strong relationships with her students and their families. Diana Dawson is involved in her community outside of school and assists those who want to learn to speak English. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Diana Dawson on her selection as November 2012 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, you might think this is official, but actually, we have to vote on this. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Congratulations. Let's show our appreciation, Diana.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for taking time out of the City Council meeting for this recognition. It is a great honor to be here today. Education is one of the most important things that we can bring to a child. So I want to thank you for your continued support in Oklahoma City Public Schools' efforts on bringing education to Oklahoma City. Thank you to the City Council, the Filmore City Councilperson, Meg Salier, the Rotary Club, Oklahoma City Public Schools, the Foundation for Oklahoma City, and my wonderful staff at Filmore. Lastly, to my family for their love, support, and for instilling in me the value of education so that I can pass it on to my students. Thank you.
Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor, if I could just comment further. Today, Diana will be recognized also at the Rotary Club at lunch today and as part of the program between the city and the Rotary Club. She'll be receiving a $500 gift card to be able to buy supplies for her classroom. That is a combination gift from Rotary and the Foundation for the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Thank you.
We're on item 3B now, the council agenda, and that is the appointment of Rex Amsler to the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Commission. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 6th. And 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 30th. All right, comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning. On page 14, under dilapidated items, item 8E1, item C, 1721 Northeast 23rd Street. Who asked that be stricken? We need to re-notify. And on to page 15, under item 8F1, item A, 1800 North Ann Arbor. Who asked that be stricken? It's now occupied. Item C, 2608 North Dewey. Who asked that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item G, 2104 North Portland. Who asked that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item H, 2703 South Shields. Who asked that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item I, 1328 Northeast 9th. Who asked that be stricken? We need to re-notify. Item K, 2312 Northwest 19th. Who asked that be stricken? The owner has secured. And item O, 1731 Northwest 39th Street. Who asked that be stricken? The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items.
All right, can I ask a question on A? This, on the roadway widening, these are 2007 GeoBond?
Yes.
Okay. So the source of funds cited is, I guess I'm confused. Is it, it's... Is there another fund besides 2007 GeoBond that's involved?
Maybe.
This is one of those projects where the MFA is doing the engineering in advance and they'll sell the engineering to the GeoBond program when the GeoBond money is paid.
I'm sorry, what's that?
A lot of times, we'll not have sold enough bonds to fully fund a project. There's a desire to go ahead with the engineering. And so MFA will take over the engineering responsibilities, get hire consultants, do the plans, and then when they're completed and where there's enough money in the bond fund, the engineering department buys essentially back from the MFA that design work.
State law requires us to, after we've sold the bonds, three years to get the projects built. Well, that's sometimes difficult because by the time you design it, and then if you have utility relocations or something like that, it makes that difficult. So our past practice has been, for many years, is to do what we call advanced funding of the project. So the MFA will go ahead and fund us to do the engineering of the projects prior to the selling of the bonds. And then after the bonds are sold, then that money is returned back to the MFA. And so it's a revolving fund, and that allows us to cut down the timeframe after we've sold the bonds to get the projects built.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's vote on the MFA.
Before you move on, I have a question on that same project, MFA. It provides for replacement of bridge north of 192nd Street. And will that require the road to be closed during the construction of that new bridge?
I would suspect that it probably would, but we'll look at the options. Obviously, this item starts the engineering, so we're going to know a lot more once we get the project underway.
If we do have to close roads entirely, we need to do, make sure that we give it a significant advance notice to the people who use that road because we've had some difficulties out of May Avenue when we closed the road for a short period of time, relatively short period of time, totally in traffic. So I just want to point that out to you. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
All right, let's vote on the MFA. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA. And convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There's one item.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCPPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items.
You know, I have a question on item A.
Okay.
The, I want to compliment the people who put this together. They're buying six side loaders that would be CNG-powered, which is a good step. But there's some additional rolling stock that's going to be purchased. I would hope that we would consider using alternative fuels, either CNG or electric on these vehicles to continue our progress towards providing cleaner transportation.
We'll look at that. Solid Waste has been one of our leaders in CNG, so I'm sure that they'll be looking at those options.
Thank you.
All right, let's vote on the EAT. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC-EAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual consideration?
I have, and maybe it could be resolved with staff afterwards, but it's E3? Is there a representative?
Yeah, we'll get Bob here to come on in a minute.
Your Honor, I have a question on D and a question on R.
D is in Dog and R?
R is Romeo.
Well, here's Bob. Bob, Skip's question was on E3.
6E3, it's PUD 1472. It's at 10900 Northeastern. It's a zoning case to be introduced and set for final hearing on December 4th.
My question is, Bob, is this really a cemetery or is it just a cremation? Is it to develop a cemetery on this property?
Yes, that's their intent. It's going to be a funeral home and cemetery.
What is the acreage?
I think they have a total of five acres on the property.
And the closest residential to the proposed site is where?
There's houses to the east about 300 feet, and then there's one to the northeast across eastern that fronts on the eastern. Those would be the two closest. There's a road, it's Oakleaf, which is to the east, and there's houses along that road. They're about 300.
And notice was given to, I mean, we have verification that notice was given to all the residents in that area?
Yeah, well, the notice went out at Planning Commission. This being introduced today, the notice will go out for council today or tomorrow. So that's why there's nobody here for council because they haven't received the council notice yet. That's what we're doing with the introduction. But they did get the notice at Planning Commission.
At the Planning Commission, everyone got notice that's in that area?
Yes.
I mean, who's the applicant?
I don't, the representative is an attorney, Michael Laird. I don't, I'm not sure who the owner is.
All right, I'll...
I can put that information together for you and...
I appreciate it.
...give it to you.
Thank you.
All right, Pat, you want to discuss item D and R?
Yes, sir. Item D is the purchase of a piece of equipment for our police department. I'm sure CSI people would, it sounds very complicated, but it's about a $90,000, $92,900 cost. And the source of funds is asset forfeiture plan. Federal government maintains, we give things back, we sell them and make money out of them and spend the money. How much money do we have in that fund? And are there restrictions on what we can do with that money?
A council senator asked about that just last month. Bill, can you talk to us about the asset forfeiture fund, please?
It's a very, it's not our most stable funding source that we have. It kind of, it's a little bit volatile.
You actually have, you actually have two asset forfeiture funds. You have one that's federal funds and one that's state funds, and they're kept separately. Federal funds have specific guidelines, much more stricter, more strict than the state guidelines.
Bill, how about how much money is in those two funds?
We have, we carry annually, we probably gain about 3.8 million in the asset forfeiture funds.
Now, does either the federal or the state plan or fund allow the purchase of vehicles?
Yes.
So we could buy patrol cars from that fund if we need?
Yes, but we usually don't. We buy, we buy vehicles. We buy undercover vehicles. We buy unmarked vehicles for special projects, and those types of plainclothes undercover vehicles. We also maintain those vehicles, that asset forfeiture money.
Good, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, and item R?
Item R is another device for the police department, and it has to do with license plate reader system that is drawing a lot of attention all over the country right now as it's being put in. It's being challenged in terms of the privacy aspect of it. And the only concern I have in Oklahoma City, I don't, I don't think it's a problem, but is that we really install, when we put this system up and running, a very tight security system process to protect that data from being mined by somebody who might make a bad use of it. And I understand that a lot of the information that they'll get is available publicly already, but it's not available in as quick and as easy a form as a tape that indicates all this stuff. And so I would hope that we would, if we do indeed put this system in place, that we make sure that the information and data that we acquire is adequately protected.
All right. Thanks, Pat. Good reminder. Anyone else wanted to speak on the consent docket before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 7 is a concurrence docket.
Move.
Kind of a long concurrence docket. Love to see those Maps for Kids projects on there. Anybody want to speak under any item listed under item 7 on the concurrence? All right, let's vote. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8. These are items that require separate votes. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 7 at 5200 East Memorial Road. It's currently AA agricultural and RA single-family, one-acre rural agricultural district, and it would become a new planned unit development. Skip?
I haven't received on, this is PUD 1465?
Yes, it is.
Right. I haven't received any, any calls, any protests at all in reference to this. Is representative here? No one is here, so I wouldn't move it.
Okay. Bob, do you want to say something?
We need the easement on this case, and he was going to bring it with him, so...
Okay.
We probably need to defer it a week or...
Roland, is that you? Is that you? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you...
All right, well, Skip, you want to make a motion for a deferred, one week?
One week or two? One?
How about, how about one?
We talked to him Friday, and he indicated he'd have it, so we...
All right, maybe he'll show up today, but for now, why don't we defer it for a week? How about a second on the deferral? Cast your votes. Item is deferred for one week. We're on to item 8A2. It's also in Ward 7 at 5220 East Wilshire Boulevard. It's currently AA agricultural district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. And Skip, we have one person who has signed up to speak on this item.
Is that, is that one person here?
Tony Watson? Tony Watson? Well, must have left already.
You're the applicant.
Okay.
You, Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Carroll and I, we talked at length yesterday and last night. We had someone that appeared the last time this was on, in protest of it. But one thing that kind of is puzzling to me is why did we even have to go through this process in the first place? This man owns a substantial amount of land that's zoned AA. And it just, I, maybe you can explain to me what that reason, the reason why he had to go through it?
To have an accessory use on a property, you have to have a main use. At this location, there's not a house, so the building he proposed to build would have been accessory without a main use. And so he either had to rezonate or apply for a variance, which he could have done. His intent is at some point to have a main residence, which then would make this an accessory use. So if he, if he'd had a house there, he probably could have done a permit for an accessory building and done his sculpture work in that building. Because welding at that level in AA, I mean, people do it all the time, so it's not unusual. But the situation here is there's not a main structure on the property, so you can't do an accessory use if there's not a main structure without a rezoning or a variance.
Who knew? All right.
Well, well, thank you, Mr. Carroll. I recommend that we pass this. There was one protest the last time this was on the agenda, but he's not here. If he wanted to share his concerns, but based on everything that I have found out about the land, the use, and now the explanation from Bob, I'm fine with the passage of it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
All right, we're on to item 8B. Deals with the relocation of a bus terminal. We're still in Ward 7 at 1948 East Reno. And Skip, we have one person who has signed up to speak. It's Roland. As you saw him move into position.
Roland Tagg, 100 North Broadway, Oklahoma City. I represent Greyhound, but I'm authorized to represent the applicant here as well. I don't know what else to add. You all have, I think, heard about this or talked with me about it. The only addition I would make is that the landlord and tenant have agreed to reduce the lease term to eight years instead of 10 years. So we would be more quickly available to move to an intermodal if that's the way things evolve here.
Appreciate that. Skip, you good with this?
Yes, but I would like to make a few comments. First of all, from the beginning of this, it's been a rather challenging endeavor as it relates to me, primarily just because the fact that it's in Ward 7 where the proposed new location is. But I think it also has been a concern with, you know, several other members as it relates to this whole issue of transportation overall. And I have taken a great deal of time to meet with the representative of the applicant and also Roland, who represents Greyhound, going to the bus station that presently exists and trying to look at the comparisons in reference to square footage, in reference to amenities for service for people, you know, riding the bus. And it's really kind of unfortunate that even meeting with the owner of the bus station, the union bus station, it was kind of like all of a sudden that we're really kind of like the oddball out. You know, it's, it's an ownership of a building that presently exists where the bus Greyhound leased space, it is a, an ownership of a proposed location that the owner could have probably, if there was a taxi service already existing on that, that site, probably would even have to come through the city for this because it is transportation. But, but overall, the big issue, I think, is the lack of the city not having a proactive visionary as it relates to this whole issue of transportation. And so here we are, talking about an intermodal hub, a transit hub at some point, sometime in the future, and still trying to connect transportation onto one big umbrella. And we missed out. And, you know, it's obvious that these conversations probably should have been, you know, years before in reference to trying to connect the transportation of the Greyhound to our public transportation in Oklahoma City that would have had more of a meaningful, I think, service for everyone. And after talking to Greyhound, they've done that in other, some cities. They have worked with a partnership agreement with the cities in some states and created a partnership capacity in reference to providing transportation. But we didn't do that. And so here we are now with, you know, this issue. And after six or seven meetings with, with the representatives, the owner of the bus station now, I mean, I feel sorry in some, to some degree about his situation, but the reality of it is, is that we know that the bus station has to move. And so that's kind of like already gone down the highway, and it's just, you know, at what point on the highway are we going to, say, pull over and park right here? And so the location at Reno and MLK, when I first got this information, I'd go, and you know, this is the most disingenuous, disrespectful, you know, that you could ever show to people coming into a city. But yesterday, I had a complete change of mind about it after the owner was so gracious to me and opened the building up and give us a walkthrough and show exactly what they could do inside the building. And so with that, you know, I'm not here to try to put any other conditions other than what they have agreed to this morning in reference to some last amenities, I'm going to say some final amenities as it relates to some of the services there. But I think that, that a lot should be credited to Roland in reference to his due diligence of working this project. He has been more than professional in every kind of way in reference to the information that we have asked for traffic studies. He got us a traffic study. He, they paid for a traffic study. Everything that I have asked for in reference to questions as to whether or not this would be a service of any degree of decency, they have been over backwards to provide that. So, and they have two representatives here from Dallas of Greyhound that met with me yesterday for the sole purpose of trying to make sure that all the questions that may come back in, you know, in the future, that they are willing to work with. And to the extent of even still considering the possibility of connecting with the city's transit system by limiting, decreasing their terms of the lease agreement from 10 years to eight years. And so, you know, there may still be some people that's going to say, you know, one thing negative about it, but, you know, it is what it is. And I have no choice but to support, you know, the move because we really can't stop it. And it's, it's just... And as it turns out, I think, I think that Greyhound has committed to do whatever they can to make the services inside the facility decent for the ridership that's coming into Oklahoma City, including moving their concession from outside to inside. And so with that, I want to thank the representatives from Greyhound. I want to thank the owner, Mr. Ward, his attorney, and also Roland for all the work and the meetings and, you know, of trying to convince me of, you know, that this will work. And so I'm now convinced under the circumstances that, you know, I can in good conscience say, you know, let's move this and move on down the road. say, you know, let's move this and move on down the road.
Thank you, Skip.
Second.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
In following up on Skip's comment, I share a lot of Skip's concerns, and I've come to the conclusion that today, we really don't have much choice, given the circumstances that Greyhound faces. At the current location, I'm not sure there's anything that we could do, certainly wouldn't be equitable a way to treat them if we didn't do this. But I do agree with Skip that this is just a lost opportunity for the city. It isn't like we woke up this morning thinking we were going to do a hub. We've been talking about that for several years now. And to let, and that the interstate bus transportation was going to be part of it. Watching what's going on with the current union bus station and what's happened there, I don't think it hadn't been a rocket scientist to know that that was going to, something was going to change there. And for us to have, be thus far behind the curve in our planning when we have somebody that nationally has participated in the very thing we're trying to do in Oklahoma City, I think it's regrettable that we're now eight years away, at least, before we're able to really have a, bring the interstate buses into whatever we do as a hub. The more I look at some of the things that occurred in the MAPS program, the more I'm convinced that many things were tacked on the program just to make sure it passed, as opposed to having any real serious interest in making it happen. And I think the hub is just another example of that. It ought to be, it ought to have been something that we're concerned about. We shouldn't be letting opportunities get away from us like this. And again, I'm going to vote for it, not reluctantly as far as Greyhound's concerned, but reluctantly from the standpoint that I think the city's missed an opportunity here to, that we could have done a better job than this.
Yeah, Meg, and then Ed.
Yeah, I somewhat reluctantly have to disagree with my colleagues. I really don't think we've missed an opportunity. I think we've perhaps gained one. We are certainly eight years away from a substantial intermodal transit hub in downtown. We don't know what that looks like yet. We're working with the tiniest component, with the streetcar, but that's not light rail, that's not interstate bus, that's not our downtown. We have lots of moving pieces to put together here, and I'm very grateful to Roland and to Greyhound for talking about moving to an eight-year timeframe. But I think, as I said perhaps last week or the week earlier, the way time flies with the magnitude of projects we're working on, we've created a placeholder in a sense and have a great opportunity to bring Greyhound into the intermodal facility. At the point in time, we actually know where it's going to be and actually know what it's going to look like and all those sorts of things. So I truly do not believe that we've missed out, or that we're behind the curve, or that we've missed an opportunity. I think this is a solution to a problem. We needed to move Greyhound from out of downtown temporarily. And I think we've developed a relationship that will provide long-term partners for a much better comprehensive solution. So, thank you.
Ed?
I want to echo what Skip and Pete said, but maybe take it a little bit further. I think it's an exceedingly poor solution. I think the process was, is exceedingly poor and poorly thought out. And I certainly am not going to vote for it because I don't believe that, I would fight to the last minute to try and avoid it, and I don't think that every opportunity has necessarily been lost. I think, number one, it exposed the inadequacy of our current transit center. I mean, we should be able to just bring buses into our current bus transit center, but we've got a transit center that's landlocked and is at maximum capacity. And that's one reason we find ourselves, is that you just can't get any more buses on Hudson. So that's something that needs to get on our radar and needs to be addressed now, is what is, how do we deal with the future expansion of our bus system if our transit center is at maximum capacity and landlocked? Second, I agree with Pete. I mean, we're either doing an intermodal hub or we're not. I mean, a basic premise, I'm not a transit planner, and I don't build transit networks, but I know enough that a basic principle is connectivity between your different transit systems. And that's, to me, is very basic and should be fought for. Five years, I think Greyhound has to be, we still have a year and a half on the lease, right? They don't have to, there's a year and a half on the lease, that's five years from the time MAPS passed. Five years wouldn't be enough time to get the intermodal hub. And instead of investing $800,000 on a temporary placeholder site, put it into the intermodal hub, that's $800,000 that we have lost as potential investment into that site. That should have been enough time to get that purchased. I'm not sure that there's still not enough time to get it purchased and have some, or that we look at city-owned property or city-owned buildings and have some temporary thing that's less than eight years and then get it into the intermodal hub. Once this gets fixed at a site, it's not necessarily going to be an easy transition to move it over, or, and it may be a costly one. But just so that we know, I mean, those who are counting votes just going forwards, for me, it's always going to be about connectivity. This locally preferred alternative for the streetcar that doesn't connect with the bus system or the transit system is a non-starter. I mean, I don't, and I'm not saying, maybe the transit center needs to move to the Santa Fei Hub, or maybe the locally preferred alternative route needs to move to the buses, but you can't have them not connect. I mean, it's just a basic principle. And I get frustrated when I hear people say, "It's only two blocks." The largest minority group in this country is the disabled. And I invite anyone to go to the transit center down on Hudson and just sit there for 30 minutes and watch the people with canes or walkers and say to yourself, "Oh, it's only two blocks. It's only two blocks," and watch them. They say, "It's only two blocks." Connectivity is key to building transit systems, and this is a mistake. And I'll leave it at that.
Pat?
Your Honor, I think that some interesting comments made. I agree with what Meg said, though. Eight years is a relatively short timeframe to do what we're talking about doing, and that is to select an intermodal site, ask the bus company to come in and do something, find a site adjacent to it, if possible, and build a bus station. So I think the eight-year lease is essentially a short timeframe. Secondly, I have a question. In our intermodal discussions, did we contemplate moving the bus transfer station?
I guess it has to be decided. I think we should, but yeah, there's a lot of steps in that process.
There's a lot of steps in that process, and I think the selection of our site ought to reflect accommodating some of those steps. And I think the Santa Fe Station's a great idea, but it may not be the best idea if you talk about a true intermodal transit center. Because the ability to bring all the city buses plus the Greyhound buses into that area, a facility there for transfer, a facility to maintain and deliver Greyhound passengers, I think we may need to rethink our whole intermodal site selection process. I think, I don't, I tend not to agree with the other side of the horseshoe, but I think they pointed out some interesting facts this morning we need to look into, and I think it's some situation process issues that we need.
Well, I don't think we've done anything to preclude everything you're suggesting that we do.
I know, but we're building momentum.
People want to design today, and there's a process, and it takes a while.
But we're building a lot of momentum to use the Santa Fe Station.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Difficult to fight.
The more you put in there, the more concerned you can be about, you know, how are we going to fit everything in there? But I don't think we have all the information to determine we can't fit everything in there. I think today, I would say that I would still be hopeful that we can.
That's a great issue, but I think we ought to decide that before we buy the site. And then find out too late if it's too small and not adequate for what we want to do with it. So far, all we've talked about is one modal. It's the streetcar system, and we need to reflect the possibility, at least, of some of these other aspects.
So I think we have.
I think HUB's study evaluated those type of things. But to do that, we're going to have to do some things like take the compressed lot. I mean, you talk about taking the compressed lot and putting some parking in there and making that available for some of the options. There's some property to the north we're going to take a look at. There's some other options out there that are going to have to be pursued.
I would just say, one, I mean, I don't know why this couldn't have waited two more months, three more months for our $200,000 bus routing study to get completed and figure out how this works with it. I just, and if this passes today, which it looks like it will, I would ask that that be at least incorporated. My understanding is that many of these, and we can ask where it came, but many of the interstate, many of the bus are heading to the VA. So how are they, and I know you've sent me an email that says you don't think that many of the bus riders are Greyhound bus riders, but we don't have any hard data to say one way or the other.
We don't know where our passengers go when they get off the bus, whether they get, go to the VA, whether they get in a car that picks them up, whether they get on a public bus. We don't have any data to tell you that answer.
Yeah, David?
I think we ought to look at, this is just going to show that there's always a diverse set of opinions on this, but I think from a ridership, it really is an improvement. One, because there's two inexpensive hotels in the area, right across the street. There's two truck stops in the area, so those who are having to stop here in between bus trips have places to cross the street and have a hot meal compared to the current location. I mean, they are pretty well restricted to this little building. There's no hotels in the immediate area. There's no place for them to eat at, so I think this is truly an improvement. Would it be nicer if we had more space? Yes, I would agree with that. And I know they looked at other locations in the general area, plus the proximity to I-40. This has a lot of good things going for it, and to just focus on the negative aspects is surprising to me that none of the positive aspects of this location are being brought out. And then finally, this is a private company. If this is where they believe the best location is, I think we ought to give them the ability to make that decision and support it. So I'm supportive of the move. And with respect to city bus service, I think it will be very easy to incorporate it. Currently, there's a bus line that's a few blocks away, and for it to be extended down to Reno, maybe I'm being naive, but it doesn't seem like it's that big of a problem. So anyway, I think we ought to focus on some of the positives as it relates to this proposed move.
Skip, up on the motion.
Before I move, could I ask one other question to the representative Roland? There were some issues that were an added concern in reference to signage, the pole, the length, and also some of the issues in reference to buffering on the east side of this location. Are you all prepared to go on the record to say that you will address those issues in reference to the site visibility from the east side at Reno and MLK? And also this issue of these signs, because one of those signs over there is just, it's almost a skyscraper. And, you know, to put a sign up there, it just continues to clutter that area that, you know, has got too many of that old grandfathered issues already. And I just think that as far as trying to at least bring some decency in reference to your visibility from signage, are you all willing to state on the record that you will, you know, amend to those conditions?
Absolutely. I will give you our assurance from Greyhound's perspective, for all of the members who are here, that we will go back and give serious consideration to all of the components and the criteria you mentioned as far as the signage. As I mentioned previously, we, the signage as it is appeared on our drawings does not go all the way to the upper portion of that pole that you're referring to. Our drawings now have that kind of centered toward, and I think that possibly if we have that up on the diagram there, but basically the sign doesn't go all the way to the top of the pole.
And I apologize for the record, could you, and Mayor, I didn't want to interrupt your position, but we need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Randall Livingston. I'm corporate real estate manager for Greyhound for the western portion of the United States. It is a pleasure to be here today.
And Randall, there was one other issue. The present bus station, they have just incorporated or placed a, what they call it, a shop 24 as far as a concession stand. And the proposed site initially had one of these that they also have where they wrap it in this outside. After looking at the location and going inside, is it my understanding with you that you all have agreed or will agree to make sure that the ridership will have some amenities inside for purposes of food?
Yes.
And I'm not talking about a kitchen, just with the same type of project that you have at the Brest-Deschanel.
Yeah, that's one of the considerations we'd have to look back and explore a little bit further. One of our primary mandates for a lot of our facilities and for all of our facilities is to provide those amenities for our passengers because with Greyhound, we want to create a positive customer experience. As was mentioned earlier, we are a private company, and it is our goal and mission to provide a positive customer experience for all of our passengers that are traveling on our buses across the country. So that will be something that we will take back and see what we can do as far as the modification of our designs. Unfortunately, I do not have our design person here with us today. He is out on vacation for the next couple of weeks, but we will take a look at that, a serious look at that, and see if there's something we can do with the design to make sure that we tweak that to where it is a positive customer experience for our passengers. So we will take that seriously.
Well, that's, you know, the seriousness is what I, it's serious already.
Yes.
My concern is that we're not going to have people coming in on a bus, getting off a bus and having to eat outdoors.
Right.
Or having to get whatever they could, they need to eat, out of a machine outdoors. It would be more disrespectful, I think, that if you didn't have the one, something inside, but you have one inside now. Now, to take this one and close it and move it to Martin Luther King in Reno and put the eatery concession outdoors is just not human.
Right.
Right? I don't think. And I'm just asking, you know, if you all could make that commitment to us that, you know, these people will come into this city on a bus, they get off a bus, they go inside, they'll be warm, they'll have the restroom facilities, and they will have something inside that they can have to eat. Some people ride a bus and they have health problems. They need to get off of a bus and get something to eat because of either their medication or because of some other health issue. And, you know, the bus station here now, they had the ribbon cutting about three weeks ago a month. I was over there. They have a little microwave where people can get the food out of this robot concession project, and they can warm it. I just think that that's something that, I know you all are a private company, this is a unique issue. I went to the length of trying to make this work. Can you concede into just one little compromise as it relates to that?
Absolutely. That will definitely be something that we will concede, and we will look into that, definitely. And we will, of course, as with anything else, we will bring that back and make sure that everyone is pleased with whatever we have proposed.
So should we defer this?
I would hope that it would not be the case that it would be deferred, but basically, you know, we would like to at least have that opportunity to at least have, to propose that we would have something within the confines of the building as it exists right now. The design that we proposed, basically, we looked at a lot of configurations before we brought it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We looked at a number of different ways that we can configure the space. One of the situations that we ran into- One of the situations that we ran into is we wanted to make sure that there was enough adequate seating in the building, and whenever we were looking at that, we had to make concessions in other areas. But we can certainly look at that and reconfigure the seating in the lobby area, and we can look at the seating that we have in both areas that we have allocated for seating, and we can certainly make some concessions to make the food available and the concession area available for the passengers. That would be acceptable and in many ways superior than what we've already offered.
You know, I don't want to, you know, debate this all morning, but I think the transparency is already there. I went to the bus station because I did not believe that the square footage at the proposed location was fitting for decency of people getting on and off the bus and having to wait at the bus station. I was assured in reference to the square footage of the proposed location, that the square footage was actually more than the present location. So I went back to the bus station, and I counted the squares in the ceiling, and I walked it off, and just last Friday. And after looking at the bus, the proposed location yesterday, going inside, you all heard me say that without a shadow of a doubt, I believe that it is equal in reference to space when you knock out all the walls, and there would be adequate seating and an adequate room for restroom facilities. And you have, I forget what the actual dimensions of that box that's inside the bus station now, and I know it would fit. So I don't understand why it has to be a consideration unless this is all of a sudden just an issue where you all just don't want to put it inside. Why didn't they put the one at the Union Bus Station, at the bus station now? Why didn't they put it outside?
I'm sorry, the current bus station?
The current bus station. Why didn't they put the concession box outside of the bus station if you're going to put this one on the outside?
Skip, I think what they could do here is turn the front of this toward the building, open the front of the building. Perhaps the back end of it is outside, but the service is from the inside. And that would, that would provide a place where customers could walk up inside in the warmth. It would just be a matter of turning the front from facing outside to turning the front to facing inside. That would satisfy the necessity, that would satisfy getting, allowing people to get their food from the inside of the building and be able to heat it and so forth without having to do it on the outside. So I...
I just...
I mean, rather than putting the whole thing inside and reducing the square footage, people would have access to it. They wouldn't have to go outside.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we pass this today, assuming the votes are here? And Roland, you've heard our concerns about, about the, you know, the being able to take care of these people as they come into our city, and I think the reputation of the city is on the line with their image, that you're going to do what you can. We don't know how to design a bus station. That's obviously Greyhound's expertise. But it doesn't necessarily seem like we want people eating outside if there's a better way to, you know, present a better situation. But I don't, I don't think we need to get into the idea that we're going to design the bus station for them. And I think Councilman Kelly has spoken, you know, on behalf of the entire city, when it doesn't seem right to have people standing outside, you know, between buses and waiting, because sometimes those waits can be quite a long time. And I'm seeing head nods from Greyhound, too. And this is a little bit different, because most transportation systems have some sort of government ownership. Our bus system, you know, the planes that come into our airport, and this is a private sector company that's providing interstate bus systems. And, you know, five years now, there might be a competitor, there might be two or three. I mean, you don't necessarily know. This is, this is different than most transportations and most what's considered public transit. So I guess that's where I would like to see us go. I'd like to see us go ahead and pass this today and hope that Greyhound hears our concerns and knows that we would like to have them in our intermodal transit hub sooner rather than later.
Rick, I agree. Can I ask Rick one question about our transit center? And I can do it later if you want to pass this now, but I'd like to, I think it's...
If it didn't have anything to do with this, I'd like to go ahead and get this passed.
We can do it later, then.
Okay. All right. All right. Cast your votes. Passes eight, one. Thank you all. We wish you luck, and thanks for your service. All right, we're going to go back in time. If you were with us about 15 or 20 minutes ago, you saw that we deferred item 8A2 for a week.
Item 8A1.
My apologies. Item 8A1 was deferred for a week, and it appears now that the easement is here and legal says it is ready to go, and so if, if we could rescind the deferral, I think we can go ahead and vote in item 8A1, Skip.
No, they would second the defer, rescinding.
Okay.
Reconsider.
Reconsider, not rescind. Is that correct?
Reconsider.
Okay, the motion is to reconsider, and we have a second. Cast your votes. Item 8A1's motion to reconsider passes, and so now we can have a vote on item 8A1.
To rescind.
Now we're going to rescind it. I remember how complicated this is now.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to rescind item 8A1 and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now I'm guessing we can vote on it. All right.
Move approval.
Reconsidered and rescinded, and now a motion on item 8A1 as listed. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2, you may recall that we had someone who had signed up to speak, but when I called their name, they weren't in the room, and we went ahead and moved forward on that. They have now returned, so I think it'd be appropriate to hear from them. Tony Watson?
I think he left again.
He left again?
Yeah.
Okay.
But he's here to speak.
All right, David Brooke?
Who is it going to be?
David, if you'd give us your name and address for the record.
My name is David Brooke. I live at 7301 North Sooner Road.
Okay, you're speaking on item 8A2, which passed a few minutes ago, but I'd give you a couple of minutes to discuss your concerns if you'd like.
Right. You're referring to Spud 679?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I was just worried about the fact that we're changing from agriculture to giving this man, it's not manufacturing, but, you know, if he just does one architectural thing at a time, it's fine, but I'm just worried about his, the waste that will be afterwards or the side effects of, you know, welding does have some stuff. His office now, or his building now is in an industrial area, and this part now is not at all industrial out there on Wilshire. And I was worried about the building itself. Is he, is he going to be required to make it, is it just going to be a big metal building, or is he going to try to have to make it, you know, fit in with the looks around there?
Okay, well, let's bring up someone from planning. Bob, do you want to answer his question about the requirements and the design requirements of a double A accessory building?
In double A, you can have a metal sided building. There's not any other restrictions as far as brick or rock. I was looking to see if he put that in his document. There's not any kind of architectural restrictions in there.
Right, I wouldn't assume so. This is not in a design review district, for instance.
Okay.
You know, I can tell you that, you know, the person that made the application is a fairly responsible person in general, doesn't have a long history that I know of of doing irresponsible things. But when you start talking about building stuff and things that are, that are zoned for agricultural, there's a lot of leeway.
Right.
So I think you're probably fortunate to have this person doing it, but we don't have a lot of control over what they do in this circumstance.
Okay, now, and then, but like you say, if he's welding, there's some sort of debris, was that taken into consideration of not letting a bunch of waste go into the environment?
That's beyond me. I would like to think not, and there are certainly, you know, federal regulations that, you know, would be invoked.
Yeah.
That's probably beyond the scope of what we're voting on today.
Okay, well, I apologize for not being here at the right time.
We appreciate your interest. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we're on item 8C, and this has to do with some purchasing issues, and this is a public hearing.
Move it.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is an ordinance that's being introduced today. We'll be setting a public hearing for November 27th, and it has to do with banners and design guidelines.
There's really some things we talked about of how we handle PUDs, and Russell's here to go into the specifics of the ordinance.
This ordinance relates to Bricktown. Good morning, Mayor and Council. On occasion, we offer up amendments to our design ordinances. We have multiple of these. We keep a running list of issues that we run across that derive from interaction with applicants, things that staff sees, recommendations from the committees and commissions, and then we try and roll all these together and come with ordinance amendments about, about once a year. This last exercise has been going since about July in 2011, proposes a number of amendments. Most of these are relatively minor. We have clarification about the description on building heights. We are providing for the capacity now to do administrative approvals for large banners. You may have noticed last year, we had quite a few of those. We anticipate the same this year. This sort of clarifies that capacity, and accelerates our ability to be able to deal with those. There are several new provisions. We have developed some building conservation and rehabilitation guidelines that have been adopted as supplemental guidelines by the Bricktown Design Committee. We're also providing for preliminary review of projects. This is something we have always provided to applicants, but now we're articulating that provision within the ordinance. We also have design guidelines for parking garages that may front onto the canal, ensuring that we're screening those cars that are at the ground level. The biggest change is to prohibit surface parking within 75 feet of the canal. We think this is really important as a design criteria to facilitate the urban development of the Bricktown area. We've had a lot of different meetings the committee has met on multiple different occasions where property owners in the Bricktown area have been able to question staff and the committee. That's gone back and forward several times. We finally took it to, the committee finally signed off on that, and then went to the Planning Commission who signed off on it last month. So we believe that we have met all of the concerns for the majority of property owners within the Bricktown area, and we'd now like to move forward with this ordinance. It'll come back for a second hearing on November the 27th and final hearing for adoption on December the 4th. You happy to answer any questions?
All right. Comments or questions on this item that's being introduced today? Council will have other opportunities to check in. Yes, Mayor?
I would, Mayor, just, Russell, you may have said this, but did you have some public meetings in the district itself?
Well, we, the committees were the, were the public meetings. We didn't have any, any separate public meetings.
Okay, but you feel like, as a general...
We believe, yeah, we believe that there was adequate, adequate opportunity for people to express their views, so there were a number of people who showed up at, at the committee meetings as a result of their input. We did make some modifications. The prohibition on the parking within 75 feet is the one that still had some angst out there, but we feel that that's really important for Bricktown's development.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, everybody ready to go on this? We're voting on item 8D to introduce this instead of public hearing for November 27th. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8E, it's a series of hearings regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. An item 8F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a couple of revocable rights of way permits. The first one we'll be discussing is item 8G1. It's for the OKC Turkey Tracks 5K that takes place in Ward 6, and it looks like we have a couple of people moving to the front of the room. We'd like to have your name and address, please.
Hi there, Mary Catherine Sexton, and it's 10317 Timber Valley Drive.
All right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
John Ozen, 2300 Bookside Avenue in Edmond.
We are planning Thanksgiving Day race, so it's November 22nd. It is called Oklahoma City Turkey Tracks, and it, we are partnering, partnering with Toys for Tots for toy donations for this race. It will take place Oklahoma City, North Harvey Avenue, between Northwest 4th Street and 6th Street. And the race, the 5K, starts at 9:00, and the one mile front run starts at 8:30. We're wanting to close the roads from 6:00 AM until 11:00 AM.
Okay, and what street will be closed? Is it Harvey?
Harvey Avenue between 4th Street and 6th Street, which will be where the race is being staged. Route itself proceeds up Harvey, does a loop through Heritage Hills, comes back on Broadway and returns on Harvey.
It's on Thanksgiving Day?
Yes.
All right. Meg, this is in Ward 6. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Item 8G2 is for downtown Oklahoma City, Inc. to hold the Tree Lighting Festival, which is on the Thanksgiving Friday in Ward 7. Skip, you okay with this? Anybody here representing this event? Well, I know I will be there. I don't remember what time it is, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, something like that. We'll be lighting the Christmas tree in Bricktown. It's a quite festive event. Santa Claus is there. He's the highlight of the show, and believe me, no one, no one outtrumps Santa Claus at an event like this. All right, let's cast our votes. Do we want to see Santa Claus in Bricktown? And it looks like we do. Casts, you ate nothing. Item 8H has to do with our collective bargaining agreement with the police. Good on that?
It's, it's, as we've reflected in executive session, passed. They ratified it last week.
Good news. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is an opportunity to enter into executive session to discuss a series of water issues.
Regimen, we do so.
All right. How about a motion then to send item 8I into executive session? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is claims recommended for denial. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 9A1? Claims recommended for approval? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And 10 is items from council. Ed, you want to get us started today?
Yeah, I want to ask Rick Kane a question at the end about some points that Skip brought up, but I want to address this article that Steve Lackmire had about the convention center on Sunday, which is creating quite a bit of buzz. And you know what I think is the most striking about that article? Is that there's really nothing new in it. There's, it's, it brings up, it's excellently written, it brings up great questions, great things that as we get ready to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on a convention center have never been printed before in the Oklahoman. And I guess that's the most striking component to me is, is why, why has it taken three years? We knew years ago that the convention center business has decreased from 126 million in 2000 to some 86 million a decade later. We knew that the consultant we hired, consultant sports and leisure, missed the mark in Minneapolis, where their OCMC was about 50% and running deficits of about 15 million a year. We knew that CSNL missed the mark in Washington DC. Others missed in Atlanta, Richmond. We knew that convention center hotels can be very dangerous to cities, that you can hemorrhage money, as was seen in Baltimore, Austin, and Phoenix. We knew that to get to a tier two status, which is, which is our stated goal, that's our stated policy, is we want to get to a tier two status. That's how you get to all the economic development numbers that were touted during the campaign that ADG touted to move the convention center up to the front of the list. That all requires getting to a tier two status. Now, I've never heard anybody really define what tier two status is in, in real clear terms, but clearly it involves a very large full-service hotel that we never talked about during the campaign, and that can, that can hemorrhage money, that will cost an extremely large public investment. that can, that can hemorrhage money, that will cost an extremely large public investment, and that to get to tier-two status, it is not a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project, and that every time we say we're going to spend two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars on a convention center, that's incompatible with our stated goal of getting to a tier-two status, that the CSNL study in two thousand and nine clearly stated you have to spend two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in phase one, a hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in phase two, and at least fifty-million dollars on a hotel. So, we need to stop saying that the convention center is a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project, because it's a four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project in two thousand and nine dollars, plus the economic development that, that may cost us in terms of, of the site. So, the, the question I would ask the public is, what are you going to do about it? What are you, I love this Sam Anderson article in The New Yorker. I thought it was a great article about Oklahoma City. It was a beautifully written article, but somebody interviewed him about his experience in Oklahoma City, and he had these words that struck me. He said, he talked about the unusual civility and niceness that we have in Oklahoma City, which we all love, is why I'm raising my family here. It makes sense to me that we would, that Oklahoma City would produce a culture of unusual civility, i.e. niceness. The other thing I'd say is that niceness has a flip side. I was in Oklahoma City for about a week, and a handful of times I got a sense that some of these Oklahoman virtues, politeness, decency, hospitality, could come at a cost. Not speaking out, not making waves, toeing the company line, conforming. I would ask the public, if you, what are you going to do? When are you going to ask for a free press? That, when are you going to ask that these things, that, who are these editors and, and corporate owners of our, our journalism that decide when things can and can't be vetted to the public? Who elected them? How did they get to decide policy by omission? And it can only come from you, the public. You have to demand that these things be, be vetted and not withheld from you. So, what do we do now? I, I would say that there's three things that need to be considered by the public in this body. Number one is, don't abandon the principle of trying to get to tier-two status. Don't try and get to tier-two status. And, and it's not, the article that, that Lackmire writes talks about some cities wrestling with, maybe we should get out of the convention center business altogether, or maybe we should go all in and, and try and get to tier-two status. Maybe there's a compromise position where you, you do a convention center, but you don't try and get to this tier-two status, and, and, which really is not that much of a fantasy, a compromise, because it's a fantasy that we could ever get there. Again, you can't get there for two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars. Mike Carrier told us in the convention center subcommittee meeting in June, two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars is not going to get us to tier-two status. So, it's, the question is, do you want to spend two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, or do you want to spend four-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars? For two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, you can keep the business that you have, and I think we saw that in another article. Kirk Humphries is saying, well, maybe, I mean, we need one just to keep the business we have. And so, maybe that should be our stated goal, not to, it was clear from those meetings, Tom McDaniel asking Mike Mize, how are we going to get to tier-two, and there, we can't get there. The, the convention center hotel, the scurven is the most complicated public-private investment we've ever done, and at the end, we had something like ten to fifteen different consultants working on that. The convention center hotel has, has a potential to make that look like child's play. It is extraordinarily difficult, and, and, and so, we need a needs assessment. We need a market study. We need to know before we go and start talking about things that, that for many cities have caused them to hemorrhage money, do we need this hotel, and how, how are we going to pull this off? Secondly, we put a lot of stock in the populist study that looked at where we're putting our convention center site. They had a whole bunch of criteria, and, and everything was ranked, and so, as we start to get more and more information and more and more data comes in, how about if we plug that data back into the formula that we put so much stock in in choosing the Ford site? Because just as important as the fact that the convention center economics aren't necessarily there to be trying to get to tier-two status, is what is the current convention center site going to cost us in terms of economic development? We learned in the last month that there are distribution lines that are running bisecting the convention center site. It goes right up Harvey. We have no idea how much that would cost, but we know that there are easements that you can't build on top of it. You can't, now to go subgrade, which we talked about at that site, you're going to have to move that. What, one of the, so, so revisit those criteria, which included the ability to accommodate a hotel on the site, the cost of construction, now that you know that you've got distribution lines running right through the middle of that site. What is that, we gave it a three. The catalyst potential for new and existing business development. What if Parsons and Brinkerhoff tells us that this site is going to impede development? We gave that a four. Compatibility with existing planning initiatives, truck access, the, the fact, as we get more and more data, since we put so much stock in this site selection analysis formula, I, I would propose that, that we continue to put that data and see how the numbers change, and see if that site remains the current site. The fact is that the bulk, the large majority of the business for this convention center is going to be local or state, and they really, I don't think it matters if you have a showpiece. You don't need a showpiece for the loyal, local, and state customer base. They just want a nice place that, that they can conduct business. But to, to go after the national business and to spend four-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars is smoke and mirrors. It's a fantasy. Rick, can I ask you one question? Because Skip brought up some excellent points about food at, at, at their site, that there are people who are sick, that there are people who've been on the bus for quite a while, that they need food, they need water, so, and then we talked about that, that that's private, but obviously, our transit center is, is public. And so, I'd ask the same thing. We're asking everyone to come to our downtown transit center, but we have no food, we have no restaurant, we have no facilities like that, and I, I just thought, as Skip was talking, and he's bringing up all these points about how the treatment of these people and their needs, I'm thinking of our transit center and that, that there are deficiencies there, and that what he's saying could be applied to our, our transit center. What, what are your thoughts?
Well, two things. Number one, when we, when we designed the transit center, we actually designed the transit center to accommodate buses, and then the building evolved from that, and we needed to make sure we had plenty of room. So, our facility itself, the building that sits on the site, is a little bit smaller than what we would have chosen had we been able to design the building, but with the limitations of the site, the traffic flow that was necessary, the number of buses on the site, we got what we got. We do have vending machines in the facility. We did look at the same type of setup that, that is at the Union Station, or the Union Bus Station, or the Greyhound Bus Station, as it's better known. In fact, Mr. Kelly and I were there at the same time, making the evaluations. They did come and talk to us about that type of a setup. We just don't have the physical space within our facility to accommodate a setup of the size that they were offering. What we've seen evolved shortly after the beginning of our transit center operation there, where we currently are between fourth and fifth off of Hudson, we saw the private sector open up businesses around us, and immediately across the street. There's a small deli operation that provides food, and oftentimes, you'll see our transit customers go across Hudson to that station and come back if they choose not to purchase what we have in our vending machine. So, I mean, that's kind of the history of why we are, what we, where we are, and what we're doing. It was proposed that perhaps one of those machines could be put outside of our facility. Again, there's space issues, but I kind of argued the same position that Skip did. We don't want to stick the food outside. We'd rather have something inside. And again, we have the private sector options that are, that are surrounding our transit center so that our patrons can just simply cross the street if they need to.
Would, would you say that our transit center is at maximum capacity in terms of buses coming in and out of it?
Yes. Yeah, we've looked at it, because initially, Greyhound came to us and said, gee, we'd like to have, house our operation at your transit center. There's also a second player in town called Megabus. It is a, a new bus operation that connects between Dallas and Oklahoma City, and they soon hope to connect to St. Louis and use Oklahoma City as the hub in the middle, and they too have talked with us. Our problem is, we just simply don't have the space, nor are we set up to handle operations where the people are toting suitcases and luggage and want to store luggage in between times of catching buses. Again, our, our facility is just not large enough to be able to accommodate that.
So, we're landlocked, and that landlocked, being landlocked is going to preclude us from future expansion or accommodating entities?
Well, it'll, it'll preclude us from future expansion at that site. What, what it does, and, and you did bring up earlier in your conversation about the multimodal hub and, and what would we do there. In, in the planning of the multimodal hub was never envisioned that we would disband the existing transit center and move a hundred percent over to the new hub, that we would actually operate with multiple locations, which is not uncommon in the transit industry, and we would then evolve some type of connector, whether it's the streetcar or some other connector service, that we'd be able to make those so that we could offer multimodal connections, even if we're not in the same facility. Again, going back, those of you who were on council back in two thousand and one, two thousand and two might remember, we had a very difficult time finding a location for our transit center. It was clearly a situation of not in my backyard, and we called upon several city leaders to help find a location for us that would work. We knew we wanted to be close to the downtown area. We, we looked at, I can't remember the exact number, I'm going to say anywhere from eight to twelve sites that were initially on the table, some of which forced us to move out of the downtown core. We knew that wasn't where we needed to be. So, that was ultimately the best of what we had to pick from. Again, in hindsight, you could say it's not everything that we wanted, but it was the best we had at the time. We were able to function there. Now, as we grow our system, it's certainly my hope to do so, and clearly your support is a priority item that we improve our transit center, or we improve our transit system. That facility or that center would not be a long-term, excuse me, long-term home for our operation, but it continued to function as one of the locations if we, if we choose to keep it.
Do you see it, do you see the transfer center moving to the multimodal hub, or?
Well, I, I mean, there's no question that we've, that we anticipate putting buses at the multimodal hub. The question is, how many do we need to have there? And partly, that's a function of how the multimodal hub grows. You know, the multimodal hub, the streetcar is, is going to make a connection there. The streetcar is going to move people through, around the downtown area. I mean, one of the keys is going to be whether we evolve with commuter rail. If we're able to make successful connections to Norman, to Edmund, Midwest City, to Tinker Air Force Base, Del City, Moore, you know, that will change quite a bit in terms of, of how we have to, or the number of assets we need to put there and disperse those people. You know, and as you well know, we're just getting started on that study right now that's being led by ACOG. We'll be looking at those corridors to decide what is the most appropriate technology and the costs, and, you know, what is the future success of being able to do that.
Thank you. Gary?
Sorry.
Yeah, did you want, you, okay, Gary? All right, Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank the Friends of Northwest Ten Street for an excellent litter blitz that they put on last Thursday night that culminated in a free black worst out at Amy Rollins's place, and they are very dedicated to trying to keep Northwest Ten Street in a, in a clean environment. In that regards, I'd like to also thank Leroy Hubert and Ken Smith for their continued efforts to take litter-by-the-stick illegal signage up. They do an excellent job, and I'd like to encourage all our neighbors to get involved in that activity to keep our city beautiful, and then like to encourage the neighbors of Windsor Forest and also River Park to attend their neighborhood meetings this week. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Pete?
I was fortunate enough last Friday to be able to attend the induction ceremony to the Oklahoma Military Hall of Fame, where a friend of mine that was killed in Vietnam was inducted. It was an extremely nice event. I'd never been there before, really didn't know much about it until I went, but it was very well, they had it in the, in the Cox. The Cox accommodated them on short notice. They had originally planned to have it someplace else and sold out, and had two hundred more people that wanted to attend, so at the last minute, the Cox was able to accommodate them, even though it was on a thunder night. It was very well done. It, it was, it was very impressive, and being close to Veterans Day, but it, a lot of people that I went to school with, that had gone to school with, with John Pritchard is his name, the guy that, he was a captain in the Marine Corps who died in combat in, in Vietnam. It was a very, very touching quality event. It's just, I was very impressed with it. It was real pleasure and honor really to be there. There were a lot of really important heroes in our state's history that were honored that night, in addition to my friend, and it was, it was very moving. Again, having it being closer, so closely tied to Veterans Day was a nice thing.
David? Meg?
I think I may go against my better judgment and just make a couple of comments about the convention center, if I could. I had an opportunity to spend a little time with Mike Carrier yesterday, and it won't be any surprise that he didn't agree with a number of those points that were made in the article, and in fact, described it somewhat as comparing apples to grapefruit. And, you know, I, I think there are a number of things we need to take a look at, but this community has an incredible track record in, in beginning a project and, and also creating a, a phase two for that project, and I think our Chesapeake Arena is just a perfect example. We built that arena before we knew that we would ever have an opportunity for an NBA team, and we went back and took a look at it, and we built it up to a standard that rivals anything in this country. And, you know, I don't think we need to be hung up on a description of what tier-two is or isn't. We have a convention center that, at the time this new one will be built, is fifty years old. It cannot accommodate the kind of business that's out there and available for us, and we need to do something that raises the bar for our convention attendees, just the way we do everything else. And, you know, I think the comment that this is generally just used for local or state events is a little bit misleading as well. Our fairgrounds is the place where most of our local and state events attend, and we're also doing the same kind of work and raising the bar at our fairgrounds with this new exhibit building. We have a very robust, robust convention business that brings hundreds of millions of dollars into this economy every year, and I think we need to continue to move forward with the plans that we have and make the very best of the site that was selected by the convention, convention subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, Skip?
I would like to, to thank the, the National Guard, the Ninetieth Troop Command at sixty-eight-hundred North Kelly for inviting the city yesterday to the Employee Support of Guard and Reserve Veteran State Program. Comments was presented by Congressman Langford, Major Dilling, and his troops and staff. You know, it was a very good program to see how our troops, when they come home, that in some respect with some of our companies and corporations, that they will, will definitely be taken care of in reference to employment, and that their family will be financially secured and taken care of. And so, Walmart sponsored the, the program yesterday with their commitment in reference to the employee's support of guard and reserve. And so, to all those individuals who have served on behalf of all the citizens in the United States, my heart, the honor goes out to you, and thank you so much.
Okay, Pat?
I just a comment, Your Honor, on the MAPS consideration. I'm certain that these same kind of conversations took place with MAPS one, when they were deciding to build a canal downtown and dam up the river. They didn't seem to make much sense, but our forefathers' people who were here before, maybe Pete, you were involved in that, they, they pursued these projects and persevered, got them done, and they've been enormous successes. And as we go forward, I would like to encourage my colleagues up here to look at these things with a slightly different viewpoint. They, they're going to be difficulties associated with each and every project. I'm sure that was true for MAPS one, and I'm sure it was MAPS for kids had the same issues, but we need to persevere. We need to keep in mind the fact that these projects can be successful, and they will be successful if we don't turn our backs on them. And if we go forward, I just want to encourage our people to take a, take a broader viewpoint maybe than they've, they've taken. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, city manager reports?
This morning, we have a representative from SAIC, and Marcia's going to introduce him this morning to talk to us a little bit about long-term solid waste flow.
Good, good morning, Mayor and Council. We've been working for several months on your solid waste flowing disposal plan, a thirty-year long-range plan for solid waste disposal. The last time we worked at great extent on major changes to the solid waste program and long-range planning for the program was about ten years. and long-range planning for the program was about 10 years ago. At that time, RDB Corporation helped us, and the person who did that work for us was Bob Craggs, who's working for us on this plan. With us today, in addition to Jim Lynn, our solid waste manager, is Julie Pyle and also Mr. Craggs. And at this point, I'll turn it over to him unless you have specific questions of me before we get started. Bob?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. I think you have a copy of the presentation in front of you. I'll be speaking with that, and then Julie also has it up on the screen. As Marcia stated, we've been retained by the city, specifically by OCEAT, to assist you all with the development of a long-term solid waste flow and disposal plan. And this work is similar to other types of master planning efforts. It's looking into the future, anticipating the needs of the community, and understanding some of the dynamics, both associated with environmental health issues, associated with economic issues, and some of the technical issues. As slide number two suggests, the overview of the presentation will include providing you with that foundation, what's OCEAT's objective, what are the planned goals, what are the tasks that we've completed to date, summary of the findings, and then the milestones and the next steps. And I'll mention that I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have once we get through this. Next slide, please, Julie. In talking about presenting this information today and in working with staff, it was important to kind of come back to the foundation for the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. And so this particular slide basically summarizes really the objective of OCEAT is to keep our city clean and to address issues associated with the regulation of the collection, transportation, removal, storage, and disposal of municipal solid waste. And solid waste typically is defined, and I apologize because I'm a consultant in the industry, so I tend to use a lot of the terms, but generally speaking, it can be residential trash, it can be waste from processes from manufacturing, it can be basically renovation waste if you're renovating your home. So it's a broad base of types of materials that ultimately are recovered or disposed. So the purpose of this study, or the plan, is to provide OCEAT with, as Marcia said, long-term options for disposing of residents and businesses' trash up to 30 years into the future. So again, it's common that local governments, communities will do master plans for solid waste. It's like any other type of environmental issue. It's critical to understand the importance of this in terms of health and safety issues, as well as the economic and environmental consequences of the decisions that you make. Next slide, Julie. In talking with Marcia relative to putting this together, she said, "Bob, you need to show the activities when it comes to collecting, storing, transporting, disposing of solid waste as it relates to Oklahoma City." This provides a framework. I work with a bunch of engineers, and they like flow charts, so I apologize if there's too much up here. But at the same time, it gives you a sense that, one, it's a public-private partnership. OCEAT has staff that are directly involved in collecting, managing, transporting waste. The private industry, and there are several private industry service providers that are involved. You can also see in the slide that it gives you a sense of segmenting the waste. You have residential household waste, or big blue. You have also what's called brush and bulky waste, which is uncontained types of waste that are set out. There's recyclable materials. You have a recycling program. As I referenced before, construction and demolition materials are also disposed and recovered. And then commercial, industrial, and institutional waste. Ultimately, those materials, if they're not recovered, then are disposed, as the flow chart reflects. So this provides you with a framework in terms of the various portions or segments of the solid waste stream and how they're managed here in Oklahoma City. Next slide, Julie. So what are the goals of the plan? Specifically, like any types of planning efforts, it's critical to identify measurable goals and to basically have goals that are consistent with vision. Secondly, identify strategies to assist all of you, as well as the managers. This is like any other type of environmental area. There's a variety of factors that influence decisions. It's economic, it's environmental, it's health. There's changes in technology. I believe you passed this morning, for example, the use of alternative fuels for basically the refuse collection trucks through the CNG. So there's all types of things to consider, both in terms of energy and environmental health issues. The third goal is to benchmark similar programs. As you heard me mention, you have what I would consider public-private partnerships. Services being provided here at the direction of OCEAT, at the same time, you have contracts with service providers, as well as commercial collection and disposal. And then lastly, to recommend metrics to monitor implementation programs. Plans aren't to be developed just to sit on the shelf. They need to have implementation plans, and you need to monitor those implementation plans as far as the progress to meeting those goals. And that's basically part of this overall objective here in terms of developing the plan. Next slide, Julie. So this is a graphic that gives you a sense of the steps, and I'll just summarize from a high level. The first step essentially is to define and evaluate the system. What services are being provided? What areas need to be improved upon? What options are there? So you move into developing strategies and options, and those strategies and options are formulated through looking at a variety of different types of factors, as I mentioned, including doing some benchmarking. You then identify the preferred strategies and options, and then select this preferred approach and implement essentially the programs. And at the heart of this is to gather some stakeholder input to ensure that the master plan reflects the community's interests. So with that background, we move forward here. And next slide, Julie. And these are the tasks that we've completed to date. In terms of stakeholder input, we've established a project advisory committee. Secondly, we've characterized the solid waste services that are provided in Oklahoma City, from collecting the refuse to recycling to household hazardous waste management. Thirdly, we've developed a macro-level economic value of solid waste services. This is an industry that's pretty substantial in terms of dollar value. It has an impact on the local economy, and it was critical from staff's perspective to do some estimates in terms of the economic benefits. Next, conduct a capacity analysis. In other words, much of the waste that's collected has to be disposed, so you need to have locations to dispose of the waste, and those are typically called landfills. Next, estimate how much is being generated and what does it look like? What's the composition? Ironically, yesterday morning, before I came here, I had an opportunity to line out some staff to go to a waste energy plant, to dig through the trash and figure out how much is paper, how much is plastic, how much is metals. All of that goes into determining what kinds of technology ought to be basically applied to generate energy. And then last, forecast the future disposal needs, which is critical. It's a critical step here. In other words, you have landfills. When are they going to be full? What kinds of options do we look at? Next slide, Julie. So the first task, as I mentioned, we complete is the project advisory committee. This is a list of the 12 individuals that make up the advisory committee. The role of the project advisory committee is to essentially act as a sounding board, as well as offer subject matter expertise. And as you can see from the slide, we have a range of individuals, from several key folks in terms of the staff for the city of Oklahoma City and the solid waste division. We also have a group of individuals from the industry, as well as a representative from basically the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality. Next slide, Julie. The next task was the solid waste services in Oklahoma City and characterizing them. This slide has some pictures of basically the staff, some photographs of the staff that are involved in providing those services. As I mentioned, there is the collection of refuse, both from residents, both single-family and multifamily homes, as well as from business and industry and government buildings. That collection is done through a combination, as I mentioned, of solid waste division staff who offer residential collection. There is a contractor who also offers residential collection for a portion of the city, as well as recycling services for the urban portion of the city. There's also what's called the bulky collection, or the out-of container collection, which is critical, and many communities offer this. And the city, as well as the contractor's staff, are involved in offering that. I also mentioned that you have basically commercial collection. There's a large number of licensed haulers, but there's four primary companies that are involved in collecting the materials and disposing of them, and they own landfills here in the metropolitan area. Overall, you can conclude that you have a very competitive environment for disposal. Marcia had mentioned to me that you're all aware that it's pretty competitive, and the tipping fees, which is the cost per ton of disposal, is very low as compared to some other communities. Here, it's in the teens. In the coast, it can be as much as over $100 a ton. So the number of landfills in the competition here creates a very competitive environment, and that's certainly good for business overall in terms of economic benefits. And then you also, as I mentioned, have some recycling programs. And I've had a chance to work with OCEAT since, geez, it was back in 1991 is when I started, so I've had a chance to work with the staff and look at how the programs have continued to evolve, both in terms of becoming more efficient, as well as offering comprehensive services, including recycling. Next slide, Julie. The third task was the economic value of solid waste services. And this was critical, again, in terms of the staff, to characterize this at a high level because the solid waste industry itself has an impact on the local economy. The bottom line here is that the, an annual estimate of the value, basically the gross revenue value of the solid waste industry, both in terms of public activities and private activities, as this graph shows, is estimated to be between $93 million and $115 million on an annual basis. In terms of developing this estimate, part of our team is a local group called Economic Impact Group out of Edmund, and I believe they've done work for the city in the past, and they have just recently confirmed that this estimate seems to be in the ballpark. Their estimate was $95 million on an annual basis. So again, this is the economic value of this particular industry, so it's collection, disposal, as well as recycling, and some of the other related services. Next slide, Julie. So one of the critical pieces in thinking about your plan is how much is being generated. And again, in talking with Marcia about this, the numbers seem large, and to folks that don't do this a lot, I think sometimes I'm surprised. But on this particular graph, the blue line represents what's called the Oklahoma City Consolidated Statistical Area. That's the region or the study area. And there's a series of technical memorandums that we're doing as part of the plan itself. Those technical memorandums define all the different terms, but in terms of this particular graph, it's critical to understand that the study area basically encompasses Oklahoma City and the surrounding counties of Canadian, Cleveland, Grady, Lincoln, Locun, McLean, Oklahoma, and Potawatomi. So that region in and of itself generates over 1.8 million tons a year of solid waste that's disposed on an annual basis. Over 1.8 million tons. And that's both in terms of going to the landfills that's generated within the region and the small amount that's imported into the region. Oklahoma City's tonnage as a portion of that is over 726,000 tons per year. That's what is being disposed in the landfills. About 40% of that is what I would call residential-generated waste, again, from single-family homes and multifamily homes, and then also the other 60% comes from basically business, industry, and institutions. So we have made some estimates in terms of those tonnages, and we've broken those down in terms of both where they go, as well as the types of waste. Next slide, Julie. This is a map that characterizes the breadth of the landfills, basically in the study area. Again, the study area, as I mentioned on the previous slide. In some other metropolitan areas around the country, local governments may have a landfill that they own, or they own and they contract for operation. In some metropolitan areas, similar to Oklahoma City, they have private landfills, such as here. And you can see based on this graph that there are eight landfills that accept refuse for disposal. And as I mentioned, there are a handful that are in the city of Oklahoma City. There are also what's listed as inactive landfills that are presently not accepting waste, but there are permits that would potentially allow them in the future to accept waste. So what is the relevance of this? Well, we have done an assessment in terms of the total capacity of these landfills within the region, the study area, and the capacity for disposal presently as permitted ranges from 40 to 56 million tons. So in other words, there's airspace at the landfills. How much waste can you put in that airspace? The 40 million represents what's currently permitted and what's publicly announced for these landfills that are listed in the region. The 56 million, or the high end of the range, that represents probable expansion within their property boundaries. So why is that critical and why is that relevant? Because that's a number that you'll be using and that we've used in terms of thinking about the future. Next slide, Julie. As I mentioned before, we do waste characterization studies, and we have a significant amount of data from the work we've done around the country. This particular graphic represents basically the amount of materials that are disposed from the city of Oklahoma City. We've done this estimate through a combination of data that we have internally, as well as some surveys. As you can see here, I think what's relevant is paper is the largest quantity of the waste stream. Again, this is what's disposed by weight. Over 30% is paper. The second largest is organics, and organics is defined within our work as food waste, yard waste, and diapers, and some other smaller organic amounts. You can see those two together make up more than 50% of what goes into the landfill. Again, why is that relevant? Well, in thinking about waste, in the industry I work in these days, they talk about waste as a resource. So some of these materials can be used as a resource. And in thinking about going forward with your planning efforts, we'll talk more about that in particular. The amount of plastic in the waste stream continues to grow. You all know when you go to a convenience store, there's a lot less glass and a lot more plastic containers. Construction and demolition materials, the economy here still is continuing to move forward, and there's still construction and demolition materials that are being landfilled. Next slide, Julie. So based on what's generated and also the types of materials, we've then done what we're calling forecasting the future disposal needs. And this is the last task, and then I'll close. Mr. Mayor, council members. What we needed to do here in terms of our work is to think about this capacity, 40 to 56 million tons, in the context of how much is being generated. And whether you're doing projections for master plans for wastewater or other types of planning efforts, projecting into the future, you need to look at population increase, which we looked at, need to address growth in business. And based on that, we came up with a handful of scenarios, low waste generation and high capacity, and some variations of that, to essentially develop what we call a band that represents when we project or forecast that the landfills, as defined in the study area, basically would be full, with a handful of assumptions. The bottom line with this slide is we're suggesting that if there are no more landfills sited within the region, or major expansions outside of what's anticipated, the landfills would be exhausted sometime between 2031 and 2040. And again, the reason for the range is based on projections in terms of the amount that's generated, as well as capacity. And the relevance again of that is then thinking about this 30-year plan. Where do we go from here? What should you anticipate? Because for every ton of material that's generated within Oklahoma City, there's a cost. And there are some benefits of being able to look at that as a resource. Next slide, Julie. Next slide, Julie. So in closing, we have basically, this characterizes some of the milestones and the next steps. We started the work in April, and today we're making the presentation in terms of where we're at, in terms of the work. There's a project advisory committee meeting that we'll have in March shortly before we would come back and meet with all of you. And what's listed here in red is we would identify a shortlist of strategies and options for consideration. So to get to that shortlist to present to all of you, we take the capacity analysis, and we also do as was listed in the memo that was provided to all of you about this agenda item. On the second page, it talks about some of the next steps that are critical in terms of doing a financial analysis, looking at landfill specs, some funding, as well as based on our work in the industry coming back with some recommendations for you to consider. At that point in time, we would have provided some evaluation and some recommendations. We would shortlist those options, then develop basically an implementation plan, come back to you as it reflects here in January of 2014 with a draft report, and then the project is scheduled to be completed in March 2014. So in closing, thinking about when we do come back, and at least from my perspective, I've alluded to waste as a resource, what are some of these strategies? Well, if you look at waste as a resource and you look at it also as a cost because of the cost associated with disposal, you need to think about it in terms of diversion. So you have a recycling program. One option would be is to improve the recycling program in a cost-effective way. There's what's called single-stream recycling. You may have friends that have single-stream recycling, which is you put all the materials in a wheeled cart as opposed to a bin, and there are more materials generally that are collected. That would be one option. Another option is to take those organics. If you remember my pie chart that had all of those organics, some communities are taking those organics and they're extracting basically from those organics energy and the resource itself, biogas, and using that as, as an energy. And some communities are also developing transfer stations where instead of sending the materials directly to landfills, they would send it to a transfer station where there would be some recovery of those materials with the goal then of reducing the amount that's being disposed and reducing those costs. Last slide, Julie. So thank you much for your time. I know you had an ambitious agenda today and several interesting topics to discuss, so I enjoyed listening. Hopefully this met your expectations, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If I read the graphic correctly, it seemed to imply that we had landfill capacity for some period between twenty and thirty years. So let's pick the mid-figure, twenty-five. How consistent is that with other communities around the country? Do most communities have twenty-five years of available land space going forward, or do they have more, do they have less?
Great question. Depends where in the country you live. It depends a lot on the region. In this part of the country, it's not unusual. On the coasts, it's much less. In the upper Midwest, it's probably more around ten to fifteen years. Part of what drives capacity is the permitting process, and the permitting process, Mr. Mayor, does vary from state to state in terms of how long you can get a permit. We were very meticulous in our evaluation here relative to looking not only at what's permitted, but you may also remember the graphic had inactive landfills. There's three inactive landfills in the region that have permits that aren't accepting waste. That was factored into our assessment. So the short answer is you would be on the high end in terms of the amount of capacity that you would have on average.
My next question would be what sort of technology advancements are being made in the industry? You know, you can foresee a day when people dispose of waste in their home, you know, with some sort of technology that's either available today but not in use today. Are there being advancements there that might adjust these, these graphs going forward?
Yes, it's an interesting topic for me because we're spending a lot of time in looking at emerging technologies. For example, one project in Portland, Oregon, they're moving all the organics from the waste stream. Businesses separate out their food waste, and they're going to take it to a facility that basically uses what's called anaerobic digestion, which is you basically digest the materials and it generates biogas, and the biogas itself then generates electricity and is put on the grid. So that's one example. Another is a variation on waste energy. You may know that in the northeast part of the country, there's facilities where you just take all the waste, you dump it on the floor, and it generates electricity and steam. There's a variation on that called gasification, which is proposed to be cleaner, less emissions, smaller footprint. Those are just two examples. And then actually at landfills, some of the landfills are doing what they call recirculation, Mr. Mayor, where they put water back into the landfill, and then the waste degrades more quickly, and then it generates gas sooner, and the gas itself then is used to generate electricity with reciprocating engines.
Will some of these technologies be part of the study that you're going to be conducting here? And will we be able to look at those?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And when we come back, we will talk about the universe of those options and provide some more background and make some recommendations on what makes sense in terms of taking into account some of the emerging technologies as well as the economics, the environmental health issues.
Yeah, because I'd like to see us have less of it. You know, we can always, in this, in this community, you can always find more land. But I'd like to figure out a way where we just, you know, create less waste to begin with as opposed to just trying to find another place to dump it. And I gotta think the technology's going to be there within twenty-five years.
Yeah, and certainly the plan itself should have opportunities to check back in to see, like other technologies, it becomes more cost-effective going forward. So maybe today it doesn't make sense, but maybe five years or ten years down the road it may make sense. And we'll certainly talk about that.
It's probably going to be more costly because land's pretty cheap around here. We can always find another place to dump it. I just like to think that we're going to be pretty creative and, and come up with another solution. Skip, you want to say something?
I agree with you, Mayor. And my question is, the, the, the other cities or, or the other projects, are there any projects that's been in existence long enough as far as new technology that is using the best use as far as energy from some of the landfills? Or are they just tampering with the, with the idea? I mean, do you have any proven track records of landfills that we could look at and say, well, you know, this has been in existence for ten years, and this is the difference that it's made in reference to the amount and the size of a landfill or shrinking of a landfill?
Councilmember Kelly, if I understand your question, I'll answer it in kind of in two segments. The first is, is that, as I mentioned, many landfills now, they have applied a technology to have the waste degrade more quickly. And so if it degrades more quickly, then it generates methane gas, and the methane gas itself then is collected, and then it's put in into a stationary engine, and then it can generate electricity. Many of the larger landfills, that's the technology that they use. So it doesn't take away the need to have landfills, but it extracts the energy from the waste. A proven technology that has precluded some landfills in some locations of the country where land is more costly is waste energy. There are waste energy plants that have been operating, operating for more than twenty years, where instead of driving to the landfill, the refuse collection trucks go into a building, an enclosed building, they drop the waste on the floor, they take out some of the big pieces, and then they push it into a grate, and then that grate is burned at a high temperature, and it generates steam. And the steam is used to generate electricity through a large turbine, and then the electricity itself then is put on the grid. And then for disposal of the ash, they still need a landfill, but in short, they've precluded the need for a landfill of the same size. So in summary, those are the, those are two specific approaches that, that have a long-term proven track record. The challenge with waste energy has been what are the emissions associated with it, the air emissions, and how can we best address that from a public health perspective? And there are some other emerging technologies like gasification that propose to address that at a, at a better basis. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Ed? Thank you.
With two percent of the fifteen percent that is plastics, how much is plastic bags?
I do. I'd be happy to get it to you. I don't have it right, right offhand. I'd be happy to get to you after we're done presenting the technical memorandum. I would suggest it's probably less than three percent. By weight.
By weight.
By weight, Councilmember Shadid, yes.
Do you have any data on other cities that have tried to limit plastic bags and what impact that's had?
Yes. It, it, it has a significant impact on the residential side. As I mentioned, you have waste that's disposed, that's the plastic bags, such as I think you're thinking at grocery stores, et cetera. There's also plastic film that's generated by business and industry at times that is a similar type of plastic resin that also makes up a significant portion of that. But in short, I would say probably one to two percent of the waste stream could be diverted if you excluded plastic.
Will you look at that as part of your discussion?
You bet. If that's something you're interested in, it's something we would certainly use. So I appreciate that feedback.
Any lessons from the Norman composting program?
Well, composting of yard waste is something that has been around for a significant amount of time. I'm not familiar with the particular outcomes of the Norman program, and I'll work with Jim Lynn relative to that. But typically, yard waste is diverted from the waste stream and composted. It all comes down, Councilmember Shadid, to the markets. Can you, can you give the compost byproduct away, or will nurseries take that kind of material? It's not unusual that it can be done. It's a matter of whether overall it's cost-effective to do that. So, and we will address that also as far as a way to manage the organics. Okay?
Pete, you want to say something?
Well, I want to just comment on some things that seem to be anomalies in the, in the central Oklahoma area. One is that Councilman Shadid brought up the idea of composting. It's my understanding that Norman, city, you know, I don't know how familiar you are with central Oklahoma, but.
Yeah, I know where Norman is.
You should know where Norman is.
I do know where Norman is.
That's where the University of Oklahoma is.
That's why I know where it is, Councilmember.
They, I was told yesterday that Norman's composting facility actually does not incur loss. They, they're able to compost, and mainly they're composting yard clippings, trimmings, storm debris, that kind of stuff. And they, it operates, they believe it operates at a positive number, maybe not because of revenue, but because of the fact it doesn't go into the landfill, and therefore there's a positive savings there. We have, certainly have a lot of land area that is owned by the city that such an operation could be put on. One of them very near one of our larger landfills. And that's just a comment. I just, I hope your study goes into that because that's, I've always been, I've always thought that was a great idea, and then I heard yesterday that they, when you do the math on the Norman facility, it is a net gain for the, for the city in terms of the cost. Second comment is, the landfill that I'm most familiar with generates a tremendous amount of methane, and they vent it and burn it because they don't have a customer for it. And they don't believe that the installation of a facility to generate the electric, to make it generate electricity would be economical, which always bothered me to see that. At one time, they supplied methane to the General Motors Plant when it was in South Oklahoma City, but that's not, not a customer anymore. It's now, that's now part of the Tinker Air Force Base. But I drive by it a couple, three times a day usually, and I see that methane being vented in it, and I've talked to them about it, and they just say that it doesn't work. I'd just like to know, I'd like to have some detail as to why it doesn't work. It just seems such a waste to vent it like that.
Yeah.
The other is, I have a question about, when you talk about transfer stations, you know, historically, transfer stations were not recycling stations. They were just.
Right.
Transfer stations. People just brought it there, and, and they turned out, there was a big one out close in, in a rural area close to where I am, and I couldn't wait to get it closed because it, not because it may not have saved money, but it wasn't open twenty-four hours a day, except the public believed that it was open twenty-four hours a day. And so they dumped there twenty-four hours a day, and it turned out to be a real mess. So I'd like to know, I'd like for your study to talk about how a transfer station, even if it was re-characterized as a, as a, as an asset to recycling, how you would prevent it from being a, a major nuisance in terms of what, what it would look like around it. Because that turned out to really be a problem. I mean, everything from refrigerators to mattresses to bags full of yard trash, I mean, everything was there. I mean, they, they spent more time cleaning up the outside than they did doing anything else. That may be a commentary on the people that live around it, but. The other thing is that on page fourteen, the chart that you had concerning the future, does that take into consideration the ability of many of these sites to expand? Many of them are permitted for X number of tons and X number of years, but there's space around them that they could grow. And I've always felt like that we're better off permitting them to expand, even though they tend to be a nuisance to people around them. But the cost to, in the macro sense, the cost to everybody is less by permitting them to expand than it would be to relocate another facility someplace else and, and take that problem, export the problem of being near a landfill while increasing the costs of transportation to this material. So does that take into consideration that many of these sites are still in the process of expanding?
It takes into account what we know today. So the, the short answer would be is its expansion within their current property boundary.
Okay.
So for us to speculate beyond that, we were not comfortable. However, it does suggest that they would maximize what they presently own, and in several instances, that's beyond the present capacity, which, Councilmember, this provides the range for the forty to fifty-six million tons.
I'm not as aware of the dynamics of any of the other sites in Oklahoma City except the southeast site.
Yes.
But I know they have consistently just expanded the site by the purchase of property that abutted them, and, and while I, while I have a lot of difficulty in justifying that sometimes to the people that live around it, when I, again, like you look at it from a macro sense, unless they were willing to move into Councilman Morris Ward, I might as well, I mean, I've just decided it's better to live with it than it is to try to shut it down because it's got to be someplace. You know, it has to be someplace. The last question I have, and does the cost, when you look at the cost of Oklahoma City, is, is that cost equally shared between all of the suburbs? What I, I guess what I'm asking is do we pay an inordinate percentage of the cost in relation to the, to how much solid waste is disposed in the facilities? Do we pay an inordinate cost compared to cities that actually use our facility that don't have, they don't have a site at all? They don't, there's not a site within their city, and they don't have another place to put it but with us?
Well, the, the cost for the suburbs should account for any additional transportation. So for example, if the materials are transported a longer distance from Norman than from your ward, that transportation cost should be factored in to the price that is paid by the customer. And the landfills themselves also have a specific set of rates, and Oklahoma City and OC is actually negotiating very competitive rates with these landfills.
I know, I know, I'm not concerned about what we pay the private landfill. What I'm concerned about is that they, that, that we pay an inappropriate share of that cost that permits the suburbs to dispose of, of solid waste there at a cost lower than...
I think we have the lowest price. I think we have the...
We're the favored nation's class in the contract that helps us maintain the lowest price, receive the same low price that anyone else would who's been given a price lower than ours. The, in addition, landfills that are located in the city that take in waste from other communities are asked to submit a flow fee for that waste to help recover the city's costs of cleaning streets and, and other things that are related to the, to the trash moving through our city to get to the landfill.
Well, again, my concern is I only have one that I know about. And there are others that are located elsewhere, and I'm not involved in that. But the one that I know about... But the one that I know about, the impact of having that landfill in Oklahoma City is, it may be positive from the standpoint of how much gasoline or natural gas it takes to haul the trash from your yard to the landfill. That may be a positive, but it is a negative to everything within a half mile around it, which the suburbs then don't have to suffer that. I think that, you know, if there was a way just to miraculously transfer it from somebody's front yard to somewhere else, to the guy behind the tree, where we didn't have to pay for it, I think we'd see a net gain from that. Because you see economic development blighted around there. The one in southeast Oklahoma City has a full-time crew outside of their facility all the time picking up trash because it blows out of the trucks, and for whatever reason, we can't, we've never been able to get a handle on that problem.
Councilman, I understand. We'll take a look at it as a part of our work. We'll discuss how we might approach that.
I mean, it's one thing to have the zoo in Oklahoma City and have that be a positive experience for people from Edmond. It's another thing to have a landfill in Oklahoma City and have that to be a negative experience for the people in Oklahoma City. And I just want to be sure that's fair, the allocation of cost.
Understand.
Because there are other costs that don't have anything to do with how much money it costs to dump it.
Yes, David.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Hold on just a second. I've seen a film, I think it was San Francisco, where they're much more diligent as far as segregating and recycling their waste. We don't do anything like that here in Oklahoma City, do we? If people put their waste in the big blue, it just goes directly to the landfill. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let me ask you this. If in cities, if you know this, that do provide that type of segregation after they receive the waste, does that decrease the citizens' efforts to separate plastic and go through the recycling process if they know the city's going to do that for them? Or does it just enhance the recycling process?
Well, ironically, the communities that actually have a waste energy facility, for example, have some of the highest recycling rates. So to some extent intuitively, you wouldn't think that. You would think if I put my refuse in a container and it's going to a plant that's going to generate electricity, you know, I wouldn't be concerned about recycling, but the data suggest otherwise. In San Francisco and some other communities, Councilmember, that are having more separation of materials, they have also implemented some regulatory requirements that are basically promoting that source separation, as well as some financial incentives to do that. So it's all part of, similar to some of your other utilities, looking at the rates and trying to promote the right behavior.
As a possible recommendation, could, and I don't know if Marsh or Jim may have thoughts on this, would we try to enhance the recycle system here in Oklahoma City to go beyond just plastics? That we would attempt to encourage citizens to have a separate bin for cans or other parts of waste?
Well, for residential collection, there is an opportunity to do that through the present program. What we would provide you all with is some options in terms of how to improve that as part of the next time that we come back and speak with you. Councilmember?
Thank you.
All right. We appreciate your time and look forward to your report later in the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we have executive session. We'll be back.